Alright guys, we are starting our session three of Without Rival Bible Study. We just started talking, so I was gonna get in on the recording. What Amanda and I were just talking about was how this book is already triggering things. It's funny how it's coming up and how it's kinda, I don't know, for me it's definitely opened my eyes. But you can tell like, have y'all read, have y'all got into it? Have you started reading some and been able to dig in? Here you go. I knew I had an extra one, I could never figure out whose it was. But it's really started opening up how I view myself, for sure. And then in Encounters, like she had a girl's, well, it was a birthday party, it wasn't just a girls' day really. But how different the atmosphere was and how you were in the atmosphere, not so much everybody else, but how you were.
It's amazing because I mean, in actuality, when I think back, they were all the same as they usually are. They talk to you, but the thing is, when you hold yourself back, that makes other people hold theirself back from you. You're actually sabotaging your own relationships.
That's a good point, yeah.
You know, being quiet or being timid or not responding or talking or anything like that.
Well, last week I shared, that's exactly what I was talking about, and that's what this one, this week's going into. Chapter three, I really hit on it last week, but chapter three talks about how Sarah disqualifies herself from a conversation that she should have been in with Abraham. And she was the one that took her out. Well, I'll tell y'all, I already told the ladies what it was last week. I was at Jeffrey Warner's ordination. So Jeffrey and me and him are ministry partners, so we're, I'm there and I'm like, I'm like his sister, you know, I'm there with him. Well, they had a time where they called up all the, because there's a bunch of different churches that were there, you know, to support him. And called up the deacons and pastors of other churches to come and lay hands on him and pray for him. Now, I got a line. I didn't go. And I sat there and I disqualified myself. They didn't disqualify me. There were people that were sitting in line that I knew what level of leadership they were in in other churches. And I knew that I was at a greater level of leadership at my church. I also knew the headship that was there at Jeffrey's church. They would have never told me, "You need to go sit in, you know, you're not what you think you are." But I disqualified myself because of my confidence in my position, in my confidence in where I'm at in ministry. And it's constantly being attacked. And so we just qualify ourselves sometimes and then we get angry. And I sat there and I looked around. At first I wanted to get, I wanted to blame other people, you know. Well, there's a bunch of men up here, because I was the only woman, the only female minister. And it could have been easy. "You need to quit." I don't know, have you seen Jeffrey up in there? "I'm talking about you," or "I'm talking about your church." I couldn't even hear you, your audio must be off. I don't know what he's trying to do. He's trying to get Brady hooked up. He lied to her and told her I wasn't gonna have class. But I told y'all, hell or high water, death or none, I was coming. But I disqualified myself. And then I wanted to get angry. I tried to find a way to get angry at them for disqualifying me. But nobody had disqualified me. Nobody said I couldn't go up there. And so I thought, you know, that was a big lesson to learn. It definitely was. But right, we're gonna go ahead and jump into our session because it's really good. And Jonah, don't feel like, you know, if you hadn't read, that's fine, because the way she writes her sessions is, you really don't have to have read up to that point. Yeah, it's in the video and then you have actually two sets of questions. Questions she discusses and then there's questions in the back of the chapter. And it just makes you look internally, you know. So we'll go over some of the questions afterwards, but I thought this chapter was really good. I enjoyed it. And if you struggle with reading, the audiobook is awesome. Because she reads it to you and it's like you're just talking to somebody. So we're gonna get ready right here to do the session. Rachel Mann, I'm glad you're on. I've seen that you've joined us too. I know it's been hard for everybody to get online. And for you guys that missed last week, I had, I have not uploaded last week's message just yet. But I will get it uploaded, okay? So don't hate me. Alright, so let's see. Let me see if I can turn this up.
This next session of Insights to a Life Without Rival is called Be Part of the Conversation. You know, too many women are afraid to be part of a conversation. And you know, I want to open up with a little bit of a dynamic of what God actually has for us. And again, I think it's a scarcity mentality that women don't want to enter into some conversations. You'll know it a little bit more, but when Jonah was first traveling, we would travel with three children in Honda Civic. Addison was smashed between two car seats in the back. And then I was in the front and we were traveling and speaking. So not only were we praying for a minivan, but our children were praying for a minivan. And we had been going up and down the I-95 corridor for about seven weeks. And we came to a church and, you know, pulled into the church, there's a church we've been to before. And the people that were there, they were really sweet people and they had two kids. And they were like, "You cannot believe what happened last week. Somebody just gave us a minivan." I'm like, "No, they didn't." "That was actually supposed to be mine." "Somebody probably gave that to you to pass it on to me." And they were like, "We haven't even been praying about that." "We've been praying about a minivan. My kids have been praying, I've been praying. What has happened here? Why are you getting a minivan when you don't even need a minivan?" And I like took it as like God had 10 minivans that He could give out in that year. And they had taken my minivan. And I was so stressed out about them getting a minivan and being like, "What happened?" And then I also remember that shortly in the same season, there was some people that had furniture in their house. And there was a rich couple that said, "Oh, we want to redecorate." Now, you need to understand, my dining room had nothing. It was a wrestling arena. My bathroom room had nothing. We had no curtains, we had nothing in our house. I would run from room to room. I would crawl. I'd been caught, you know, like trying to go to the laundry room without clothes on before. I mean, I had no privacy whatsoever. And so I was praying for furniture. And what happened was, these people got given the furniture I was praying for. I was like, "Okay, God is really confused about who should be getting what I am praying for." And so I was just really frustrated because they were like, "Yeah, we didn't even need furniture. But we just gave our furniture away and we took all their furniture." I'm like, "Why did you not call me? You know I had, you've been to my house, you know that I have no furniture. I just have blue carpet." Which is probably why God was like, "I'm not furnishing that." But anyway, I had this mindset that God couldn't do anything for me. And I was reading this quote by C.S. Lewis, it's from The Weight of Glory. He said, "If we consider the unblushing promises of reward promised in the Gospels, it would seem that our Lord finds our desires not too strong, but too weak. We are half-hearted creatures fooling about with drink and sex and ambition, when infinite joy is offered us, like an ignorant child who wants to go on making mud pies in the slum because he cannot imagine what is meant by the offer of a holiday at the sea. We are far too easily pleased. I'm praying for furniture and minivans." See, I actually believe if I had started to pray, "God, I want to see my neighbors saved." "God, I want you to fill this house with people for your glory." "God, I want to be more effective. I don't want to not feel like a Christian by the time I arrive somewhere that we're speaking. God, I need a minivan." If there was something that was bigger, then God would have had more capacity to add things to my life. I believe that everything that God begins in our life usually begins with a conversation. 2 Peter 1:3-5 says, "Everything," not just some things, "everything." Everything that goes into a life of pleasing God has been miraculously given to us by getting, given to us by getting to know personally and intimately the one who invited us to God. Jesus, the best invitation we've ever received. We were also given absolutely terrific promises to pass on to you. This is what He's preaching, "Your tickets to participation in the life of God after you turned your back on the world corrupted by lust. So don't lose a minute in building on what you have been given." We have been given these things, but God is asking us to build by faith on what we have been given. And when we talk about magnificent, exceeding, miraculous, marvelous promises, you cannot talk about that without a conversation about Abraham and Sarah. Here's the story. Abram, he's got Ishmael already. Ishmael is a son born by Sarah's idea of, "Hey, why didn't you sleep with my handmaiden? And then I'll take that son and raise it up as my own." But we know that didn't turn out well for Sarah. And she's feeling on the outside looking in. But Abraham loves his son Ishmael. And Abraham's out, he's 99 years of age, he's walking under the stars. And God begins to speak to him. And God begins to tell him that He's going to establish an everlasting covenant with him. And he says, "Because I'm getting ready to do something so big, I'm gonna have to change your name. You can't be Abram anymore. You're going to have to be Abraham." And then he tells him about what he's going to do. And he said, "I need you also to stop calling Sarai, Sarai. She needs to now be called Sarah, because I'm gonna give you a child through Sarah and you need to call him Isaac." And Abraham laughs. Abraham laughs, but he doesn't just laugh, he offers God an alternative. He said, "Oh God, that Ishmael would live before you all the days of his life." And God's like, "No, not Ishmael, Isaac. Not Hagar, Sarah." Interestingly enough, we all get down on Sarah for laughing, but it was Abraham that laughed first. And God understands that if you are going to have a destiny change or needs to be a name change. And the way that God changed Abraham's name and the way He changed Sarah's name is He took a letter from His own name and He added it to Abram's name. And then He took a letter from His own name and He added it to Sarai to make it Sarah. Abraham went to, the Father is Exalted, which is actually just kind of a name that glorifies God to the father of a multitude. It was a name that defined what he was going to be. And Sarai's went from a prince to a princess. She went from a masculine name to a feminine name. God focused Abram's name to Abraham and he became seed. And He softened Sarah's name and she became soil. Because anytime you're going to have a promise, you need both seed and you need soil. So in Genesis 18:9-15, we don't know how long it's been, because the last chapter, God said, "A year from now, I'm going to give Sarah a son." But now, this time, it's obviously a short amount of time, because they're saying about a year from now. And Abram's like sitting outside of his tent, he sees angels, he's like, "Oh my gosh, stay here. I'm gonna give you a little morsel to eat," but he's lying. He actually creates this huge feast, he goes and kills a cow and he like has Sarah make bread and he has all this stuff happening. And then when they sit down to eat, it says, "The men said to him, 'Where is Sarah, your wife?'" And he said, "In the tent." One of them said, "I'm coming back this time next year. When I arrive, your wife Sarah will have a son." Sarah was listening at the tent opening, just behind the men. Abraham and Sarah were old by this time, very old. Sarah was far past the age for having babies. Sarah laughed within herself, not even out loud. Sarah laughed within herself. An old man, like an old woman like me get pregnant with this old man of a husband? God said to Abraham, "Hey, why did Sarah laugh saying, 'Me have a baby, an old woman like me? Is anything too hard for God? I'll be back about this time next year and Sarah will have a baby." Sarah lied. She said, "I didn't laugh," because she was afraid. But he said, "Yes, you did. You laughed." So let's unpack this. First, there is this designation that I find interesting. "Where is Sarah, your wife?" Somebody comes to my house and knocks on our front door. If they know me and John answers the door, they're gonna say, "Where's Lisa?" And he's like, "Oh, she's in the basement." And then he's gonna call me up. If they don't know me and there are direct salespeople, you know, like trying to go door to door, they'll say, "Hey, where's your wife?" Because they don't know my name. And then he'll say, "I'll go get Lisa," because John can never tell them no and he makes me tell them no. And I'm okay with that, because he'll buy it from them if I leave it to him. But the designation of, "Where is Lisa, your wife?" is an unusual one. Unless there was two Lisas in the house, then it would have to be, "Where's Lisa, your wife?" Not Lisa, your granddaughter, or not Lisa, your daughter-in-law. Where is Sarah, your wife? Could it be that Abraham and Sarah had begun to live like brother and sister instead of like husband and wife? And God needed them to understand that there are certain promises He can only bring forth when there's a husband and a wife. And not two people just coexisting, living like old people without any passion. Abraham and Sarah both needed to be reminded that even though she was barren, she was still his wife. Even though she had beaten Hagar, she was still his wife. Even though she was old, she was still his wife. Then, it's interesting, when Sarah laughs, the angel doesn't say, "Hey Sarah, I know where you are back there in the tent. Why do you laugh?" He doesn't do that. He actually says, "Abraham." Why did Sarah laugh? There was something that had not been nurtured in Sarah's life. From Genesis 17 to Genesis 18, it's quite possible that when God appeared to Abraham and told him not Ishmael, Isaac, he didn't go back to Sarah and say, "Guess what? You're gonna have a baby. This is gonna be awesome." I know it sounds crazy. I laugh, but get excited. Somehow Sarah was hearing that for the first time. And they were saying to him, "Hey, did you not unpack this? Why did your wife laugh? Abraham, not Sarah, Abraham. Is anything too hard for God? And why was Sarah eavesdropping when she should have been out and part of the conversation?" A bunch of angels show up at our house and I happen to be outside of the room when they show up. And John's talking and the angel's like, "Where's Lisa? The door's gonna fly open. I am gonna be front and center. I am, I'm here. Would you like me to Skype in the children? Who all needs to be here for this conversation? I am not going to be outside of a conversation when it talks about the promises of God." And yet I feel like far too many women are hidden and they are laughing and they are lying. And you say, "How are they lying?" Well, they're lying, saying, you know, "It's okay. It's okay. I don't want to be part of this conversation. It's okay. I don't want to get my hopes up. I don't want to be disappointed again. I don't want to be hurt again. It's been a long time. I left a long time ago. I lost lot. I messed up with Hagar. God, I, I, no, no, it's okay." And God's like, "I'm sorry, that's a lie. It's not okay. You're a daughter of promise." And the daughter of promise is not allowed to talk like a slave. It's not okay. It's not okay. There's some conversations you need to be part of. Galatians 4:22 says, "For it is written that Abraham had two sons, one by a slave-woman and one by a free woman. But the son of the slave was born according to the flesh, while the son of the free woman was born through promise." God was working something deep within Sarah so that she could not only carry, but that she could bear a nation. God said that kings were going to come through her. It doesn't take a lot of time or depth to get pregnant. Drunk and careless will get you pregnant. But when you're talking about somebody birthing a promise and birthing a nation, it takes a little bit more preparation. Slaves will always say, "It's too late." Or, "I'm too young," or, "I'm too old," or, "I'm not qualified because of my past." That's what slaves, slaves are bound to what they can provide in the flesh. They are bound to their labors, they are bound to their past, they are bound to their perspective. But when you awaken a daughter of promise, you understand, it's not about you. It's not about your mistakes. It's about your dream. And the truth is that many of your dreams that you think are just personal are God's prophetic answers to things that He wants to shape. In nations and kingdoms, you don't know what's in your dream. You don't know what is in that conversation that you're content to listen in on. But you need to press yourself in. You need to come into a place. See, silence is not submission. Submission is learning how to say things in a way that is honorable and a way that can be heard. There's a time that silence is actually rebellion. And when God says that He has something on your life and you withdraw, that's rebellion. And you withdraw, that's not humility, that's disobedience. There are times that women need to press in and just figure out how to say, "I work with my husband. I fail five times out of 10." But John and I have both decided that even though it is harder to do it together, we need to learn how to do it together. Because we're both better together. And that, that is not just with marriage, that's with family, that's with church, that's with dynamics at work. We need to be women who are willing to be part of the conversation. If you don't know how to talk in the conversation, then you need to ask God how to form your words. So we're gonna stop talking like a bond woman. We're gonna stop denying our dreams. We're gonna throw open our hearts. We're gonna remember the promises He gave us when we left that place of the world and we began to step into this journey of a promise. We're going to begin to speak yes and not mock the promises of God, not scoff. She was scoffing like, "Seriously, God, your timing is awful." His timing does seem awful. I'm gonna agree with that, but the truth is, after the fact, it always seems perfect. After the fact, not in the middle, but after the fact. So I need to ask you, who is it too late on for you to believe that God can put love back in your heart? See, I think that God is really looking back for His Genesis dynamic where people are passionately, honorably related. When people are passionately, honorably related to one another, whether it's marriage or a church or work or friendships, then God gets involved, because He can only bless the anointing of unity. And when we are honorably related one to another and honorably related to God, barrenness is broken, hope is restored, legacies are established, and dreams are given life. So I'm going to pray over you and believe that that conversation that you have eliminated yourself from, God will give you the wisdom how to be back in that conversation. Father, you anoint women with wisdom and you open our mouths with kindness. And Father, when you began to birth this promise in Abraham and Sarah, there came a season when what was born of the flesh began to mock what was born of the Spirit. And you anointed Sarah with wisdom. And she said, "Cast out the bond woman and her child." Father, I ask that you would anoint each and every woman to see where the bond woman and what is born of the flesh and what is born of the will of man is warring and mocking and scoffing against what is born of God. That they would be women that will open their mouth with wisdom. And Father, I break barrenness off their lives, that they would no longer hide, they would no longer laugh, and they would no longer lie. What you have for us, Father, is a promise without rival. And we believe that you listen into the conversations that we have on earth. So Father, anoint those conversations for your glory in Jesus' name. Amen. And amen. Okay, so what are you laughing at? What are you hiding from? What are you arguing with God about? What, what is, He has said to you that you're saying, "I'm too old, I'm too young, I'm too stupid." I cannot have you opt out. We need you to have everything that God has for you. You're gonna go into a conversation on this and I want you to stop hiding, laughing, and lying. I want you to remember again the things you have once in your heart and strengthen it, hope, and begin to speak those things for, in Jesus' name.
I'm gonna pause it so that music, alright, turn that off. Alright, so what did y'all think about our session? That was good. I'm like, this is kind of one of my favorite ones so far. The laughing part, you know, how sarcastic are we in general, just as a culture, but naturally? And in essence, that's what she was being, was sarcastic. You know, like, "You got the wrong person." You know, "How dare you think that I..." whatever. So let's look at these questions. "What are some of the conversations that you need to be a part of? Anything jump out at you when she's talking about that? You understand the significance of what she was saying. This was Sarah's home. This was, you know, they have servants and stuff. Sarah didn't have to be off cooking type thing. Sarah had a right to be hospitable, really, in the presence of these angels, these men that were there. But at some point, Sarah, I love what she said about Sarah had to have a part of her that wasn't nurtured. Because she didn't feel like she was worthy and valued and valuable or had anything to bring to the conversation. Not that she would have gotten in trouble if she, you know, come out and, what like Abraham was gonna smack her if she came out there and sat with the men. Wasn't like that. It was, she disqualified herself. And there's nothing in Scripture that proves that Abraham would have told her she couldn't come. Matter of fact, it would have been expected. And then when they asked for, she still didn't come out, even though she heard that they asked for. You know, that is, just like I just told y'all about my story with the ordination last week. That was totally, I disqualified myself from that conversation. Can you think of conversations that you might need to be a part of in your own life? I know in marriage, there's times that I had disqualified myself or just didn't, I didn't feel like my voice had value, so I didn't enter the conversation, if that made any sense. Even though it was obviously a conversation I needed to be in, you know. I think we do that a lot more than we think we do. Anybody got anything on that? They want to throw out or share or want to go on to the next one? That was kind of personal. And if you can't think of anything, maybe you can ask God, "Have I, have I, you know, backed out of a conversation I should be in? Or kid on the sidelines where I should have been maybe the foreleader or the frontrunner on that conversation?" Here, alright, let's go to number two. "Where have you mistaken silence for submission?" These are, these are some, these are things that are gonna probably come to you after the fact. You're gonna be driving down the road and be like, "Wait a minute, okay." Because this is, "Where have you mistaken silence for submission?" In the church, as leaders in the church, it's very easy. I thought about you when she was talking about this. About the silence and submission and stuff. And how sometimes we think we're just being the good church person or the good, you know, we're just doing what we're supposed to do. But then God lays something on your heart. But because you aren't confident in who you are in Christ, you don't feel like you can, you know, do that. You can go there, you can say that, or you can bring that to the table. But then sometimes we put it as, "We're just being submissive. We're just doing what we're supposed to do. We're just not being rebellious." I love what she said that, you know, it is actually rebellious to be silent at times, you know. On the married side of it, sometimes, you know, we try to be that submissive wife. I know, you know, there's so many misconstrued ideas of being a submissive wife. And I always said, "Submission was an F-word at my house." Oh, heck, no. I ain't laying down and just taking nothing from nobody, let alone some man, you know. And I really struggled with that part of the Christian, you know, woman-wife role thing. But the reason I struggled was because my view of it was very sick. It was worldly, it was wrong, it was corrupted. And like being submissive to your husband is not always being silent. It is acting in an honorable and respectful way. It's not cussing him out and screaming and being like, "Let me tell you something." But you can still say things and get your, you know, be in the conversation and have a voice. I love this whole study. Now, we're at the middle part. So we're at a, there's a transition happening. When you get caught up in it, you're gonna start seeing, I know some of us have already started feeling some of the changes and stuff that, that the book has provoked him. But the ultimate thing is that this is to bring us to a place of finding who But the ultimate thing is that this is to bring us to a place of finding who we are in Christ. Our uniqueness. Every single one of us, all of us, have a very unique calling. And it doesn't have to fit any other mold. It's a mold-breaking calling. Me and Brandy had a very long conversation this week about, you know, how people put ideas on you and, and make you, you know, like, well, like me, they expect certain things out of me because I walk in leadership. Or, you know, whatever, or Brandy's a brand-new pastor's wife, and they have certain expectations of a pastor's wife, you know? And some of them are just stupid. It's just like, "Really? No." She's not gonna be queen of the casserole now, you know, just get off of it, it's okay. But it's, it's stifling. But it's very easy to fall into those molds of what people have for us. Everyone, from y'all being young, single women, you know, to us being old maids, not, not old maids, but old ladies, you know, whatever. But when we start finding ourself in Christ, first of all, when we find Him, and then we start finding ourself in Him and not in the opinions of others, all this stuff starts to be clearer. And you, your silence is, He didn't give you a voice, He didn't put you on this earth to be the second string, you know, "We'll call you when we need you" kind of thing. You have a purpose and a plan, and it's awesome. Anybody, now number three, I don't know if anybody's just like, "Oh yeah, I'm hiding from this." I can tell you, I'm hiding from some things. When they ask about hiding, I'm, there are things that are in my heart that scare me. Big dreams and big things, and it's like, dude, I can't do that. There's no way. And, and the truth is, I can't do it. I can't do it on my own, in all my, by myself. But I don't even wanna tell nobody. I'd just rather hide from the whole idea, so I ain't even gotta deal with it. Which is rebellion. If Christ put it in my heart to do it. And this whole thing, when we started this, I thought, when I started listening to the book and doing the study and stuff, and, and watching the trailers and hearing her heart behind the, the message of the book, just like last week when I didn't go up front, and there's these little girls there. And I didn't partly go up front because I'm a woman. And I, in my mind, am dealing with these gender roles with females in ministry. Because I have caught some crap from being a woman in ministry. And I've had men tell me, "You should be a submissive wife, you should not speak out in church, you're not allowed to preach." You know, all these things that are just ridiculous. But they, I don't let them go, and I don't get healed from their hurt, so I take them with me. So I automatically come on defense when I'm around a bunch of men in ministry, because I'm like, "Oh, I got this, I, I'm just as tough and bad as y'all," you know? And that's when it becomes not so submissive, it becomes really rude and arrogant, but I gotta come respectfully. But I do hide from things at times because, really, I fear the pain and the rejection and the heartache and the mud and the fight that I might have to go through. So it's just easier to hide from it. But how disrespectful to the very Lord that's given me the calling, that's given me the vision, the ability to all this, it's just... So I'm gonna leave that question with you, because I know nobody wants to say, "Oh yeah, I'm hiding from this." So, number four. What promise or promises are you laughing at and lying about? Think about what they're talking about when you're laughing at. They're talking about that sarcastic scoffing like, "The Lord can never do this," you know? We don't wanna say that, but that's exactly what Sarah was saying. "You can't do this," you know? Which obviously proved that she, her relationship wasn't only hurting with her husband, but it was hurting with the Lord. Because she had a limited view on what he could do and what he would do for her. We do that. How many times have we prayed and prayed and prayed for stuff, and it didn't happen? And so next time, we don't pray as much, or we don't believe as much. Or we quit praying. Yeah, we quit praying about it, yeah. And that's, that's, that's tough. But it takes the perseverance, but ultimately, it comes back to who is God that we serve, that we, is great, that He is greater than anything that we can fathom. We have to come back to that. And the promises that He's put in you and the, the things that you burn for that nobody else knows, the things that you dream about, like, "If I had a million bucks and nobody's telling me no, this is what I would do." You know, those things can very well be a Lord. And the closer you draw to Him, the more, you know, you know that. Now, in the book, in the back of chapter three, on page seventy-eight, it talks, it asks more questions, and some of these are the same questions about it. That it wants you to take steps, like, what steps can you take to change this dynamic of being on the outside, looking in to one of the active and passionate involvement? Have you ever wanted to be passionate about something? You ever wanna be driven and focused? Like, I wanna be like Lisa Bavir. Like, I want to just say what I'm gonna say and mean it and bring it in her confidence. We all know, we can see her confidence comes in the Lord. It does not come in herself, if she walks with boldness. I wanna be like Beth Moore. Every time I watch her, I'm just like, "I just wanna bring it like Beth Moore brings it." Priscilla Schrader.
Oh, yes.
She's just fierce.
Yes. And she knows what she's saying, and she's just confident in it. And I'm just like, "I want to be like that." And it's like, okay, so they're active and passionate, they're involved. You know, and that's women in ministry. But it could even be, you know, people in the workplace, people in our community. You know, a lot of people have even said they wanted to be like my grandma, who is on the forefront of most any charity type thing that has happened in Tannehill County in the past sixty years. My grandma has been at the very forefront of it. And a lot of people are like, you know, "Ms. Janice is just amazing, she's just a great person, she loves people and she'll die for them, basically," and she does. But what is stopping you from being that way? I've been thinking about this lately. What stops me from being like Beth Moore? I'm not talking about like the, you know, the marketing and the websites and all that stuff. That stuff comes. The promotion comes when you walk in it with the Lord and you put it before Him, and you say, "I'm gonna do what you tell me to do." And what if He tells me next week to stand at the red light with a cross? What? But what if He does? They got where they're at, because they said yes regardless. And they kept plugging along. Because I can promise you, their kids have been sick, and they felt like crap. You know what I'm saying? All this stuff has happened. I bet you, they've all preached to five people in the church somewhere. And I've had to think about that, because in ministry, I watch, sometimes I show up and there's literally five people, especially if they know I'm preaching. Because they know I'm preaching, they don't go to church. But, and Pastor John said, "Don't, don't blame yourself." They really, that's just really the science of it, you know? And they're like, "Oh, we'll take a break, because Pastor John's not here this week," kind of thing. That's, that's how a lot of people are like. But I try to think, and I tried to come up with, a long time ago, when I first started dealing with that, it very, I mean, when you see that, it's like rejection. You, you feel it personally, like it's rejection. But I try to think, what you are faithful, the small things you're faithful in, you will be then faith, you know, blessed with much. I think about that. So if I'm faithful to preach to one, like I would a thousand, He's gonna meet that. Well, that's the same thing every day. If we are faithful with the day we're given, the twenty-four hours we're given right now, then what else can He magnify? What else can He expand? She was just praying for a minivan. Like she said, if I started praying bigger, what all would be poured in? All right, this is not being a smooth, sweet little chapter. It's been, it's deeper. Now, it's right towards the middle, you know, you're in that, we're hitting that spot where we're gonna, you know, just kinda start digging in deeper. But I want to really encourage you to try to read through chapter four next Sunday. Is it four and five? Well, don't kill yourself. But the questions for next week will be, yeah, they'll be over four and five, and it talks about living uniquely. But I also want you guys to be thinking of how, what conversations are you excluding yourself from? We don't realize it. It's easy to be angry at other people, it's easy to fuss at other people, or to think that they've excluded us first. When truth be told, we knocked ourselves out of the game before we even got there. Because of our own self-doubt, self-image, whatever. You know, we, they're not gonna listen to me. And then, what are you hiding from? Those things you need to, to think about and read. And I'm gonna tell you, there's a lot more in the chapter that digs into that a little bit, in the promises. Because the whole point is, we've got to look at ourself in a healthy way. In a healthy way, meaning a truthful way. We gotta look at ourselves, we gotta realize how we see ourselves. Because we gotta see how bad we see ourselves. We're our own worst enemies. We exclude ourselves from anybody else, even if it's an opportunity, exclude ourselves. So, tonight is a little bit shorter. That, y'all heard my alarm go off. I promised Heath I would make an alarm, because he's at home with all sick kids. And so he's like, "Please, please, please don't be out late." And honestly, I feel like I've been hit by a truck. So, anybody got anything they wanna throw me in? The chapters, you know, that so far the book has really encouraged you in, or just conversation, I mean?
Being a single, single mom.
Yeah.
Because people expect more out of me, just because I'm not married. And, you know, have my perfect little family.
That's right.
You know, because I mean, I'm single.
Yeah.
I mean, I know, I beat myself up all the time, just because people look at me.
They do. It's not right that they do, but they do, yeah. That's awesome. You know, there's, there's so many aspects of that, what you said, being a new mom, period, whatever your age is. We all compare ourselves. Then being a single mom, at that, you compare yourself to. And then being, you're, you're still in high school. I mean, you're still a teenager. So you still have the teenage aspect that you're having to deal with, and compare yourself to, "I'm a, I'm a sixteen-year-old teenager, and then here's my sixteen-year-old friends." And wow, you know, should I be this, should I not be that? And, and there, that, if you can get this at sixteen, who cares that you're a single mom, because you are leaps and bounds ahead of most women that are fifty and sixty years old. Because living in that comparison is what drives out your joy, and it, you get... It's like, when you can take comparison off the, off your visual type thing, you can get blinders onto your purpose, what you're supposed to be. And you're still compassionate, you're still loving, you're still bringing people in, and, and it's not like you're being selfish. It's, it's like God saying, "It's me and you." It's not you and all of them. You know, the, the whole new mom thing, a mom, period. Every mom in here can say they, even just from being pregnant to raising kids, it's, you're comparing yourself to, "Well, this mom did this, and this mom did that." And then, you know, "This one's stupid, and this one did great." And, you know, "This one's wonder mom," and you just, it gets crazy.
You never stop feeling like you're not good enough.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. You got an extra element of comparison that your parents are, that the kids are bringing it in on, you know? And that, that's very true, because I've been in those shoes too. That is, you know, and honestly, it's something you gotta get a grip on, because I don't care if your kids are eighteen and twenty, twenty-five, thirty years old. You're still their mother, you're still being compared, how was your brother? Okay, your mom is still walking in a level of people comparing her about how her and Chris, Seth. I don't know why I was calling Chris. But how she got a twenty-four-year-old son, and they still are looking at her parents and skills with her twenty-four-year-old son. My mom has a thirty-four-year-old child, and we still have these conversations. Her and I have these conversations. And it's, it's a cycle that we have to get a grip on. Because it will rob you mentally, your joy, your happiness. So to hear that this book and this study is just encouraging you to break outside of that comparison, just like every one of our children are so different. Every one of our, our fingerprints, every person in here is uniquely, biologically, physically different. Why would we think our spirit and our soul and our calling and our purpose is anything like the next one sitting inside it? You know, but we do. And we think that they're supposed to fit in these same molds and these same images. And doesn't that, if we hold on to that, doesn't that make God pretty small? Like, wow, He can only create cookie cutter images, He can only create the same thing over and over? No. When you stop and think about the Lord, the Creator of the universe, could you have sat down out of nothing and thought of what's around us? I think of colors, colors. So there's a world with no color, and then God created color. That's just unfathomable to me. There are colors in heaven that we have not ever seen. That's just crazy to me. I'm always like thinking, "Well, if I take blue and green and put it together, then I can make that color." And I'm like, "Well, would that color would exist? I didn't create it." I think about stupid stuff, and I know that sounds crazy. But because God is so much bigger than our understanding, but we need to tap into that to remember, why am I comparing myself to this person? You know, why am I comparing myself to that outcome or that ministry? And be, and dare to be bigger and different, not technically better, you don't have to down somebody. I love, love, love the quote that says, "No candle ever lost something while lighting another candle." That's how we should be. In the beginning of this book, she talked about how, you know, "Your beauty doesn't deflect from my beauty." "Your talents don't take away from my talents." "Your blessings didn't come out of my bank account." So we should rejoice with each other and be happy. I, I love, I appreciate you sharing that with us, because that's encouraging. But I think by the time we get at the end of this, we're gonna be totally changed people. I really do. I feel it. I can feel a change.
It's amazing how much joy comes into your life. And it's amazing how you'll start to realize what you actually bring to the table.
Yeah.
You know, just...
You don't discredit yourself from the conversations.
Just like Wendy and I, you know, just sitting there with those ladies, it was like, "They're amazing, but I'm amazing too."
Yeah.
You know, I mean...
I wanna be their friend, but they wanna be my friend.
Because they're awesome, but I'm awesome too.
I feel it here. This is the awesome club.
It was like, I was just sitting there, I mean, it was like, this conversation was flowing, and I went home, and I was like, "I'm good, I really do."
And you know, friendships and things like that, you know? How many times do you feel, even like text messages or, or conversations, and you walked away and was like, "Oh my gosh, I am so stupid, how did I say that?" And you start to draw back. And then it's, "Well, they didn't text me back, or they didn't call me back." We, we've had similar conversations, or they didn't, and then there's anger. But really, our lack of confidence in ourselves caused us to pull back. And we really initiated. I tell Libby all the time, "Don't say things bad about yourself, because you give people permission to do it to you and about you." Same thing, don't pull back when it's not, I mean, unless it's a dangerous thing and you need to, or the Lord says, "Back up." Don't pull back because you have your self-image and your, your confidence is lacking. Draw into it and ask Him to help you. That's how you persevere. There's breakthrough, there's coming. Yeah, push through it. That's, I'm telling you, I'm pushing through this whole women friends thing. Because, you know, it's like, I struggle with that. And I love every one of you guys in here, I mean, honestly, I, I do. And, but to be close to a woman is very scary to me. I'm like, "What you gonna do with me?" You know?
I'm thirty-five years old, and never had a close woman friend.
Yeah. But how, when God really started showing me this a couple of years ago, how the enemy wants us to hate each other. The enemy wants us to pull apart. He wants us to judge and compare and be nasty. Because unified, dude, we populate the world.
Right.
We are the close, God creates, and we are conduit of creation. There's no other, a man can't do that. I mean, they got their part, I, you know, I'm not killing them out. But, I mean, come on, you know, we have purpose. And when we come together and we unite, dude, we are strong. So this is, I hope this is gonna help us all pull in together and, and just start liking women better too, so... But, all right, ladies, I'm gonna stop the recording and start wrapping up this. I'm gonna stop the recording, but the Zoom will be on for just another minute, if you guys wanna chime in.